The hour of six o'clock, having come and gone. It's actually 6:07. We'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council to order at 6:07 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Navarrete?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Just before we start, just want to thank our Fire Department and our Police Department in light of the tragedy that happened at Park River Oaks. We have a resolution on the agenda and we invited all of the Police Departments and also our Fire Chief will be helping us coordinate and all of our personnel to come before the next City Council meeting, so we can thank you personally for the outstanding job you did in saving lives. There were over 372 people or more, and Alderman Smith can give the correct numbers on the And unfortunately, there was one loss of life. And our policemen and our firemen did a great job in not only protecting residents but also helping to coordinate in the aftermath, and we want to thank them for that. We also want to thank the American Red Cross for not only coming to Calumet City and helping us. Governor Pritzker, we had a call today that he coordinated along with the White House with Illinois Emergency Management and also the Federal Emergency Management in our process to help our residents more. I also want to thank our Community Economic Development Department, all of our departments that came through for our residents. We had several businesses that participated and helped us, businesses like Sunrise Cafe, Pete's Produce, McDonald's. We'll get another list, but these businesses came through along with our Chief of Staff. I would ask the Aldermen who not only participated, all the Aldermen stepped up from Alderman Gardner driving golf carts to help residents, to Alderman Smith, Alderman Tillman, Alderman Williams helped coordinate Will Cook County Emergency Management, Alderman Navarrete, Alderman Wilson, who went to the sites and helped residents. We know that this is a long process, and I want to let the residents know that Calumet City is here for you. We have not only planned with each other, but also we have implemented through our Police Chief and our Fire Chief, our system to make sure the residents know that we are here to make sure that their long-term health is our priority. So I would ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence for the loss of life that happened at the Park River Oaks. This time, we'll call Pastor Stokes up to offer us prayer, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Stokes?
Our God and Father, we thank you tonight for your goodness and your mercy. We thank you for your loving kindness toward us. We thank you for your hand of grace that is upon every person in this room. We give you praise tonight, God, for the wisdom and experience that is in this room tonight that has been ordained to lead and bring solutions to this city. We lift up the Mayor Thaddeus Jones tonight, God, that he may continue to lead and have a spirit of wisdom and counsel. We pray, God, for those residents who have been displaced due to the devastation of no act of their own. We lift up this bereaved family tonight. We ask that your spirit of counsel and comfort be there for that family in the days to come. We pray and thank you for the bravery and resilience of the public servants, especially of this city and even those municipalities, townships, and other communities that came to the aid of Calumet City in her hour of need. We give you praise and honor tonight, God, because we are here, we are alive, and we have solutions available that you want to birth through us. So we give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. At this time, will everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, just as it is.
We're at the stage of public comments. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment? Please step to the mic and state your comment.
John Rubicki, I've been coming here regularly the last six months. I don't know if I ever mentioned this before. It's not about loud music. I already discussed that with the mayor, but it's a couple of the issues I have with the city. Mainly, I don't know, but the city's going to put the speed bumps back out again. But I was at my mom's house the other day, I think it was Tuesday, cutting her grass, and she lives at 164th and State Line. And the car is just going down there. They have no consideration for kids in the street, bicyclists, people crossing the street. They're going down State Line Road from Shrum Road today, and they're not even stopping at the stop signs. I don't know if the speed bumps are coming back, but I'd appreciate looking into that on State Line Road between Shrum Road and the river. The second thing I have is, I don't know if you can do anything about it. Michigan City Road and Torrance Avenue, the apron there, I know it's a county road. I don't even come by, I work at Pete's, and I don't even come by Michigan City Road either. Somebody's going to get killed over there because the apron, people got a third lane at right there on the intersection. All they gotta do is cut the apron out and pave it real quick over there. That's the other thing. And my third and final thing is demolitions of some of these buildings in this town. I don't know if Calumet City's going to do any demolishing this year, but there are some real eyesores in the city. Michigan City Road and Torrance, the car wash. Burnham Avenue, crossing a bank, a car wash. I know they're opening a car wash on Torrance Avenue, Buddy Bear, but there's some real places in the city that are abandoned and been abandoned, and I just hope the city will start tearing some of these buildings down because it's either going to burn down or somebody's going to kill them, or... They're eyesores. I mean, the one on, the car wash on Michigan City Road and Torrance, they stripped half of it and they left the other half. It's basically, that's the three topics I just want to know. I don't know if the city can do anything, but I don't know if I even bring it up. Thank you so much, city. You're doing a great job. Probably see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to step up and make comments under public comments? If you can step to the mic and, if you want to step to the mic and state your comments, please.
Do I have to submit my comments? Take them forward?
No, you can state them here, and if you want to submit them, we can make them part of the record.
My name is Diane Blocker. I live at 1383 Imperial Avenue in Calumet City. I have major concerns for our city. When I moved in this area over 20 years ago, it was a beautiful township, and our town is falling apart. We have, as the gentleman stated, we don't have a grocery store. We don't have, when is the, we don't have a grocery store, we don't have cleaners, we don't have a drugstore. What's being done? When are we going to address it? I see letters coming through the mail that say, "We're talking about it," but when are we going to be about it? When are we going to do something about it? We have drug problems. I really don't want the community that I live in to be Harvey or another Dalton. All I see are liquor stores and pawn shops, and we see them popping up every three months. Another liquor store and another pawn shop, and I really can't afford to go anywhere else. I'm a senior citizen. I bought this home because I wanted to retire in Calumet City. We have a quiet block, and we're surrounded by drugs. When are we going to do something about it?
Hi, my name is Paula Nelson, and I live on the 1300 block of Imperial Avenue. That's my neighbor. And we are, I had already talked to Alderman Smith regarding the speed bumps, so, you know, I've been coming, you know, back and forth. But I was concerned about the same thing as far as the stores. You know, the only thing we see when I drive around the neighborhood, my husband and I, are dollar stores and beauty supply stores. We have to go out of our area even to South Holland, Homewood, or either Indiana to go to a decent drugstore or grocery store, you know. And then, when it's really nice outside, you get the loud music, I constantly call the police, and they do come. You know, we still have kids on our block, we still have a lot of senior citizens, which I'm one, I may not look like one, but I'm one, and I don't, I'm not going to tolerate that. We've been here 17 years, you know, and everything was fine, you know, but around the corner from us, those guys, they're younger, and on the other corner on 163rd and Imperial, those two houses, they zoom up and down the street like they're on the Bishop Ford. And we have kids, still have kids, and, you know, people have grandkids on our block, you know, and it's ridiculous. And a lot of us still have little dogs, people are walking their dogs. You know, people are afraid, our seniors are afraid to come out, you know, when it's just dark because of all this mess, you know, that's going on. And, you know, it needs to stop because somebody's going to get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. And so this is the public forum, and we will definitely be, I'll ask Deanne to get your information. I will just say that we are submitting a plan that the Aldermen saw presentations for a possible grocery store that we're working on in the sixth ward. We do have a pharmacy in Calumet City. It's African-American owned. Three pharmacies in Calumet City. One is African-American owned, which is, go ahead, Alderman.
Victory Pharmacy is a small pharmacy. It's actually right off of 159th Street. It's over at the old, the school supply place used to be. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We also, we have Victory Pharmacy, which is right off 159th, right next to where the, it's right around where Citibank is, right across from that strip mall. Okay, it's black owned. We also have CBS, and we also have Walgreens. So we have, we're trying to get more, but we do have, we have Walgreens. We also have Pete's, and we also have Aldi's. Aldi's is actually in Calumet City. So we do have, and we also have some other things that are coming. The Wilder Indoor Food Farm, that's coming. I'm expecting preferably targeting open sometime third quarter of this year, so sometime probably around August. And we are working on those things to bring more of them out here. But if I can talk to you all offline after this meeting, I can give you a little bit more, share a little bit more information. Also, if you all are also in the seventh ward, I have meetings every third Saturday from 10 to noon. Everyone within the ward is welcome to come. It's from 10 AM to noon. It's at the Calumet City Public Safety Training Center at 24 State Street, where I talk about these things that are upcoming. So I'd appreciate it if you also come there, too. All right. Thank you.
And I will say, part of, and I know everyone is wanting the city to fast pace and fast, fast-track some of the things that we're doing. We got $42 million in grants last year to help rebuild Calumet City. We got $8 million to help do Burnham Avenue, which is, construction is going on right now. We got $2.5 million to do Pulaski Road through state grants. We requested federal money to help rebuild a bunch of our streets. We have a plan to rebuild our sewer. We have, in May 1st, we had 413 businesses. Today, we have 612 new businesses, businesses that see Calumet City on the rise in our growth. So I would ask residents to be patient. We do have a plan to rebuild our city to make sure that businesses are coming. The Alderman did mention that we have 79th Street BBQ that's opening up on June 25th. We have Wilder Fields, as he mentioned, that's opening up. We have Buddy Bear Car Wash, an $11 million project in the second ward that's happening. So I would just encourage you, we are going to do a better job of communicating all of the economic opportunities that are coming to Calumet City. And at some point, probably in this meeting, we'll have our Assistant Chief come up and talk about our crime plan for the summer. So we hired 17 new police officers, we hired 10 firefighters. We are requesting, and we're not requesting, demanding our police that are going to be on bike patrol and walk in our neighborhoods this summer. So we're bringing that back, and we're going to make sure the residents feel comfortable in their homes. So I would invite you to join the Alderman, join the City Council. I'm encouraged by residents attending these meetings because that's how you get the information that you know that Calumet City is moving in the right direction. So I'll ask Deanne to make sure that she gets your information, and the Alderman will as well, so we can get you the plan that we are presenting to the City Council to make sure that businesses keep coming to our city. The next item that we have, approval of minutes, item five, we have ordinance and resolutions. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman.
Second.
Williams. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. June 6th of this year, this month, Finance Committee meeting was held, where we discussed several outstanding invoices to Benford and Brown and Associates. We, the committee moved in favorable consideration to pay those invoices. So tonight's agenda before you are those invoices. There was lengthy discussion regarding several components of those invoices, and again, as I stated previously, we moved, the committee moved in favorable consideration of paying those outstanding invoices. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. A Public Safety meeting was held on yesterday, which was June 8th of this year, where we discussed some of the items that are on the agenda in reference to the June 18th event. We also discussed the implementation of speed cameras in Calumet City. There's still some state legislation that keeps us from moving in that direction right now, but from what I understand, Mayor, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there is some legislation being revised in downstate so that we can, a community of this size, entertain possibly implementing a speed camera program. We discussed the cost of those speed cameras, and we also discussed, again, the safety, some of the safety measures that will be taking place in the June 10th, June 18th event. We also discussed the safety concerns of having a July 4th Freedoms Eve event. I think we're going to talk about that again in the future. So if anyone needs a detailed report, you can email me at rwilliams@calumetcity.org or just give me a phone call at 708-891-8194 or 708-212-2240. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman, ordinance and resolution?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance and resolutions meeting was held on May 31st, 2022. The minutes were done, and we actually just approved the minutes in item 5A of this agenda. The report and the recommendations from the committee meeting will actually be on the June 23rd council meeting, so I'll give the full report then. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Smith, permits and licensing?
Yes, no report at this time, but I will be calling a meeting at first availability this month. At that particular meeting, we will be reviewing any current active applications as well as any applications that are currently revoked. So one of the things that, for those residents who are here, the License and Permits Committee actually is the body, more or less, that recommends what businesses are approved based on zoning, based on need, and several other factors. So if you wish to attend, I would ask that you just check the city website as well as City Hall posting, as I'm very open to your feedback, and I'm sure the other members are also. Thank you.
Public Works, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Just reminded the residents to continue to report any abandoned properties that have overgrowth with grass or weeds. Please call your Public Works Department or your Alderman or here City Hall. And then I will be calling a Public Works Committee meeting to discuss capital needs items for Public Works. That'd be capital equipment needs prior to the June 23rd meeting, so you can look out on the website for that meeting. It'll be prior to the June 23rd regular council meeting. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council reports, Alderman Navarrete will start on your side.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly to residents, we're going to be closing up the First Ward Vision and Action Plan. Thank you for the feedback. We did put an announcement in two newsletters ago to kind of get the final rounds of feedback there, so I appreciate everyone that participated in that. Two years ago, we set out and had an agenda for the first ward, so we, in this current one that comes out, you'll see what we have accomplished, what we have next to accomplish. So look out for the First Ward Vision and Action Plan. Should be coming out hopefully sometime in July. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, the third and fourth ward held our monthly Town Hall meeting this past Monday. I really want to give a big thank you to Ms. Val Williams from the Economic Development Department and Director Tillman. I had a couple residents share with me that Calumet City can't go wrong with those two women in our departments or in Calumet City. So thank you all for kind of spearheading that meeting and taking the meeting over for myself even. I also want to thank Public Works, Police, and Fire for coming to the meeting and sharing information, and I want to let the residents know that the July 4th meeting is canceled because of the holiday, and the next meeting will be August 1st. So we will not have a meeting on July 4th. The next meeting will be August 1st at 6:30 at Downey Park 300 Jeffrey. Thank you.
Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, first to give out to God that makes all things possible. I also want to thank the residents that came out to the meeting this past Monday. Of course, your concerns were heard, documented, and we will be reasonably addressing those as soon as possible. Also, I want to invite everyone to the Juneteenth event. I'm really excited about this event because we haven't had anything in the last couple of years where we were actually able to gather. So there's a lot of time and effort that's gone into this to put this on for the residents, so please, I have some flyers here if anyone wants to get one, and I'll also have flyers for the other Aldermen to distribute throughout your perspective areas. And I think that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to keep encouraging the fifth ward residents, contact my office with any reports of the issues, blinded properties, continue to report those properties to my office. 708-891-8195. Also, many of you have received the newsletter. My call to action was in there to the men of the fifth ward plan on hosting a real man barbecue picnic. Those of you that are interested, you can contact my office, 708-891-8195. Please continue to report suspicious activities to my office. If you see something, say something, or if it needs immediate attention, please dial 911, or you can contact the Police Department, non-emergency, 708-891-25, 868-2500. Also, those of you that are still in need of K95 masks, I still have plenty available, hand sanitizer, please continue to contact the office. Those items will be dropped off to you promptly. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to remind the residents, 79th Street BBQ will be having an opening on June 25th. If you have any questions on that, please contact me. My number is 708-891-8197, or email asmith@calumetcity.org. Also, want to definitely give a grand thanks to Public Safety, Fire and Police Departments, my seventh ward liaison and ward assistant, Bridget Burns, the mayor, most importantly, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Williams, and Alderman Wilson for their efforts in helping with the recovery. Unfortunately, I was affected at the fire that occurred this past weekend. It affected, as the mayor mentioned earlier, over 300 residents, most of which still are displaced from their homes. We're working in the relief recovery effort. For those residents in the park who are interested and need assistance, please contact my office at 708-81-891-8197. Also, see the city's website on the CC RAP Resident Assistance Program. That program is also being extended to help out the park residents who are definitely in need. Also, I want to thank the Red Cross along with all its strategic partners. We put on a great event this past Tuesday, and we look to see more productive efforts from that. And also, all the respective partners, thank you outdoors, just all of them. Great information for those who've been affected. To give you an idea of how bad this is, that one fatality, we have quite a bit of immense damage that was done from the fire in the 200 building. So the 200 building for this, at this particular point, is not livable. The 300 building is actually pending with smoke remediation and air remediation, a couple of other things are currently in progress. If you have questions on that, please give my office a call at 708-891-8197. Also, please contact the 1B condo associations, or the, if you're a park resident, or the 1A condo associations. If you are in need of any city information that certifies that the fire happened and you are a park resident and you need information to file your claim, please contact the Calumet City Fire Department, as they will provide a letter on that behalf. Thank you. Also, the, what is, I'm sorry, June 18th, Saturday, June 18th is our monthly meeting, Town Hall. It will be at the Calumet City Public Safety Training Center, so please free to join, bring your concerns. At that meeting, we pretty much discuss some of the things that are going on in the city, things that are going on in the ward, some of the current projects. Love to see you. I do offer refreshments, so you are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Under the mayor's report, at this time, I'd like to call up Chief Bockert and Deanne Jeffrey to give the council and residents an update. Last week, I issued an emergency declaration, which allowed the city to not only interact with federal officials, but also with state officials, who we had a meeting with today. As part of that update, the City Council approved supporting residents and placing them in hotels and also providing meals to families affected in the park. So I would like Deanne and our Fire Chief to give a brief update. On our efforts, Deanne has been coordinating with all the Aldermen, particularly Alderman Smith, not only on our efforts from the city, but also our efforts with FEMA, AEMA, and federal officials.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. As Mayor mentioned, Alderman Smith and I connect multiple times a day throughout the day. I am pleased to state that the residents that were staying at the hotel, for the most part, have all checked out. They have taken the steps necessary, excuse me, to contact their insurance agents, agencies to make arrangements. We have approximately 15 hotel We have approximately 15 hotel accommodations. That was based upon, conducted, or determined by phone calls made by the city, the association, reaching out to the residents, one call at a time, starting with the 200 building, 100, 300. In addition to that, as Mayor mentioned, we have coordinated catering. Mayor Jones, the administration of the city, has arranged for catering. That food is being catered daily at 5:00 PM to the clubhouse, and they're serving, I believe, 100 people, and that's been plentiful thus far, correct? In addition to that, to the mention of the MARC event, that was the Tuesday event that Alderman Smith mentioned, multi-agency resource center. So, that was coordinated by the Red Cross, number of organizations, resources, table set up for the residents. Residents are spending three, four hours, on the average.
There was a non-day event, well over 100 residents in the park in attendance.
There were well over 100 park residents that were in attendance, primarily of the residents that were affected by the fire. It was a great event, a lot of multi-agencies there that worked with the Red Cross for recovery and relief. The 200 building residents are going to be affected for about, roughly, easily about 18 months, and the 300, there's no ETA, but we expect at minimum probably a month or two. So, it's a lot, it's a lot to digest at the moment.
Incredible. They had health professionals, mental health professionals, like I said, insurance agencies, a number of resources available. Very tough for the residents to go through the process. We try to, you know, carry as much of the burden, tapping on the resources available under one roof, you know, to really make it as efficient as possible. I will say that there are a couple residents I'm still in touch with that continue to struggle with the process, and so we, you know, we are on the phone daily. I go, whether it's the hotel, the Red Cross, over to the park condos, speak to them face to face. We've had quite a few residents come here to City Hall as well. So, we are continuing that outreach, and we will continue to stay in communication as long as needed. The other thing that I've learned today, and I haven't announced this to the council yet, but there is a new point of contact for Red Cross. Her name is Leslie Luther. She's the Assistant Director of External Affairs, and specific to Calumet City. So, I'll share all of that information. But for record, her phone number, 815-761-1771. Again, Leslie Luther, she's the Assistant Director of External Affairs. When this all started or happened, she was out of town. She's now back in town, so she is now the main point of contact.
And do you have her phone number?
Absolutely. I do also have her email address, which is Leslie, L-E-S-L-I-E dot Luther, L-U-T-H-E-R, Luther, at redcross.org. Leslie dot Luther at redcross.org.
All right.
So, she's our main point of contact. She did advise that residents have not been taking advantage or making use of the shelter, the 24/7 overnight shelter. As a result of that, and this is their second round of offering the shelter, as a result of that, they are taking a very close look as to how much longer that shelter will be available, and so they are being very patient with us. Again, we're going through another rounds of phone calls and outreach to the residents. You know, this is kind of a second and almost third go-round now, but if residents need shelter, and through the shelter, they offer three meals a day, right? And this is in addition to the catering that we offer at the clubhouse. But if nobody takes advantage of the shelter, they will close the shelter. I think that's all I have to report on that end, and I will turn it over to Chief Bockert.
Thank you. Most of the stuff was covered tonight, but, I mean, this was true, a team effort by every city department. Every city department was involved, every city department was out there the day of the fire, and that continues to this day, so we appreciate your guys' support. Just to put things in perspective, as far as the fireside goes, we have a mutual aid agreement with all of our local departments, which consists of 20 departments. Out of that 20 departments, 20 of them were represented that night on the scene. Because of the magnitude of this fire, we also went to an inter-divisional box, which brought in other agencies from other, as far away as like Frankfurt and Manhattan area. All in all, there was 37 fire and E-Mest agencies represented, not just necessarily on the scene, but change of quarters throughout the whole district, along with on the scene. So, 37 agencies, we can't thank them enough for the effort. And also, just to put this in perspective, I've been getting phone calls already by Fire Engineering and Firehouse Magazine. This is one that goes out throughout the country, and they've already been in contact, they already did a quick scenario of it, and they want to do a full article because of the unique nature of this fire. Just the way it started, how it spread so fast, it was a wind-driven fire, as we stated. When our companies got on the scene, the first floor, as you know, was a parking garage. Two through seven were fully involved in the balcony area, and that was because of the wind-driven fire. There was reports of 40 mile per hour gusts that day, a couple of videos that we got by residents prior to the Fire Department getting there, you could hear the wind through the cell phone, as it's pretty known when you're standing outside. So, it's going to be, it's a unique fire. We're looking forward to these studies that are going to be done, so we can learn from it as well. It was a true case. Again, I can't thank our neighbors enough. Dalton, Cal City, South Hound, and Lansing were the initial companies on the scene. 22 guys, 22 guys, and we had six floors going at once. Again, I can't thank it enough, the chiefs in the neighboring town, they took over. It was a group, it was a true group effort, so I appreciate everything, and we're going to recognize them later on at the council meeting as well. As the Alderman Smith, and he pretty much hit everything on the head, right now, the main focus is to get the residents from 100 and 300 back into their places. But there's a lot of smoke damage throughout because it is a common hallway. It's a 312-unit building, it's a common hallway that goes from the north end all the way to the south end. Once they get those areas cleaned up, we should be able to get the residents back in. The 200 is a totally different story. The 1B section of the 200, right now, they asked that everyone stay out of the building unless they have, you know, a reason to be in there. But as far as the residents, they're not going to be allowed in that 1B section. 1A, that's something that we need to work on as well. That's going to be a little bit later compared to the 100 and 300, but the 1A, we should get those residents in probably within the next few months as well. But again, I can't thank all city departments, our neighboring towns, it was a great showing of support, and that continues today. I mean, that doesn't start, you know, end when the fire ends. That continues to this day, and we just appreciate everything that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions? Can I answer quick? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item eight on the agenda are information items to be accepted and placed on file. Is there a motion to approve items 8A through G?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item eight, eight, I mean, 9A1 through 17, I would like to request that item seven be removed, that was just added. So, can we remove item seven?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith to remove item seven, second? Is there a second? Second by Alderman Tillman. All in favor to remove item seven? So, the motion would be to approve item 9A12, 1 through 6, and 8 through 17. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved. Sir.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. Roll call. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Navarrete.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Tillman.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Gardner.
Yes.
Alderman Patten. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Mayor, brief question.
Yes.
Sorry. On item number 13, I noticed that we didn't have much in the budget for this year for that program. We would be able to, with the new budget coming up, add to it if we, as the program extends into the summer, correct?
Yes. The participants or just the budget?
So, item number 13 with the youth hiring, I know we only have 5,000 in the budget this year, but I know we have budget coming up, so we'd be able to, if we exhaust the five, with this new budget we're going to pass, I guess, keep the program going throughout the summer.
Yes.
Is that a treasurer's?
Treasurer's.
Taking the question, yes. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Item B are building permits.
William Boden.
Sorry.
William Boden, 817.
It was included in the motion, Alderman. Item B are building permits. Do you guys want to table this for, to allow the Alderman a chance to review them or approve them tonight? These have been reviewed by Inspection Services, so the motion can be made pending Alderman approval to approve these items in the sixth ward. So moved. Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Gardner.
Navarrete, sorry. I know, made the motion.
So, motion made by Alderman Williams, second by...
No. Not Red Gardner. Not Red made the motion, I said.
So, the motion.
Ross Hovskevin.
I know, right? So, motion was made by Alderman Navarrete, and second by Alderman Gardner. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Navarrete.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Tillman.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Gardner.
Yes.
Alderman Patten. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Item C are resolutions and ordinances. Does anyone have any questions about resolutions and ordinances that are on the agenda?
Mayor, item number one, I tried to review it, I saw there was some, quite a bit of changes in item one. I don't know if we want to discuss those now, or maybe defer it, make a motion to defer it to Alderman Tillman's committee, Resolutions and Ordinances Committee.
Motion is to table, actually, motion is to refer item one, crime-free housing, to the ordinance resolution. Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Navarrete to refer item. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number one will be referred to the Ordinance and Resolution Committee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Resolutions 2 through 7, is there a motion to approve ordinances, resolutions 2 through 7 on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Alderman Navarrete.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Tillman.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Gardner.
Yes.
Alderman Patten. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Before we go to financial matters, I'd like to recognize the city engineer. We have three substantial items under financial that deal with our sidewalk program, also our engineering program for Michigan City Road, and our PACE bus program. So, I will turn it over to Matt Berger for a brief report on those.
Thank you, Mayor. The sidewalk program, it's the MFT sidewalk program that we do annually. That was sent out to bid, and we're making a recommendation to award it to Davis Concrete. They, with all the input that we got from all the aldermen, we're going to be able to address a lot of areas of need, and they are looking to get going on this rather quickly, and we're going to be hopefully knocking this out, some of the sidewalk needs and concerns that we have over the course of the next two months, two and a half, three months. Item three, it's actually under Financial Matters, and it is a Michigan City Road multi-use trail. Working together with the Community and Economic Development Department, Calumet City was the recipient of a $360,000 grant. It's funded through Cook County through their Invest in Cook program. The city does have a little small match, $90,000 for it. This is to connect a dead-end part of the trail that is at Torrance Avenue and Michigan City Road, and it'll link it back up to the Burnham Greenway, completing the loop there and providing a greater mobility for those multi, that use the multi-use trail and, for the area. Items 15 and 16 are intricately linked together. That is the PACE transfer facility. Again, working with our Community and Economic Development Department here and engineering, we were able to work together and work out with PACE, an intergovernment agreement where they will fund the design and construction of $2 million to Calumet City for a bus transfer station. This is going to be at Ring Road, right across the street from the Sam's Club, essentially. And PACE had a meeting with them. Mayor wanted to report that they are extremely excited for the opportunity to work with Calumet City, and really, really just excited about the, you know, how this is going to open up and be a new facility in the south side that they currently do not have, and really help them with their bus service.
Thank you. Does any Alderman have any question for city engineer?
Yes. How much are we anticipating each Alderman to get in their respective wards this year for the MFT sidewalk placement program? Dollar amount?
Traditionally, typically, we program about 80,000 in for the sidewalk, and we get the list of needs, working with you guys, and trying to allocate and distribute it as evenly as possible as we can.
Okay, thank you.
And Alderman, I think as we've done in the past, if any Alderman runs out of funds, we'll make sure that the Mayor's account has money, and then we also have additional funds in your wards.
Another ward, yeah.
Yes.
So, the 80,000 is the total amount? Are we looking to divide that amongst the seven wards?
Yeah, we typically do about 80,000 to 90,000 dollars and put that in, and then we got, this year, we went a little bit heavier, it's about 92,000 dollars is what we got for the, that we're going to be allocating to the sidewalk program, and that's going to be, construction will be occurring over the course of the next few months here and concluding, ideally by Labor Day.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor. Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you. Typically, we alternate with starting from the north side of the city or south. You know, if we're starting on the north side of the city this year, specifically maybe the northeast corner, working our way south.
Have not discussed that yet with the contractor, but we will put that in the notes.
Thank you.
Thanks, it's been advised.
Well, in that case, the fourth ward goes first because they never made it last year. Does any of, does any of that, well, I guess we can, what are the status update on the Pulaski construction?
The Pulaski Road resurfacing construction, we have a, we, the design is being wrapped up, and that one is going to be going out to bid here pretty soon.
Okay. That's the Pulaski is the one we got the $3 million from, or $5 million from the state?
That one is the, funded through the $3 million, I believe.
I know Alderman, that was a concern in your ward, and that one is the priority. We also had the information update, which we'll give to you, Alderman, on Buffalo Avenue as well. So, if you can work with Alderman Smith, provide an update on Buffalo Avenue, appreciate that.
More than happy to. So, Buffalo Avenue went out to bid, the bid was awarded, and that project is slated to start construction. We have to submit some paperwork to IDOT, and once we get that into them, construction will probably be beginning within the next few weeks here.
Will that, will that happen within this month or July?
I would anticipate the construction, just based on the fact that we have to submit the MFT resolutions and some of the other documentation and the contracts to IDOT, it'll probably be kicking off in July. But you will see some investigative sewer work occurring out there also too, in the next week or two, to try and clean up and get some of the sewers ready, so that that way it is set for the construction of the road.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Financial items 1 through 28, are there any questions? Alderman Gardner, you have a motion to approve? Alderman Gardner motions to approve financial items 1 through 28. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes. Alderman Navarrete. Yes. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Navarette?
Yes.
Alderman Smith? Alderman Tillman?
Yes.
Hey, you guys be easy on the deputy clerks, he's...
Alderman Wilson? Alderman Tillman?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
So, we are under unfinished business now. Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. And most importantly, I want to thank city inspectional. I want to thank Ms. Cheryl Tillman, who is the head of city inspection, she's been great to work with in the park relief and recovery with providing city services. Also, I want to thank Mr. Edward Evans, who's also, who also works in the, in the city inspectional department. Definitely, we want to thank Chief Richard for all of his assistance. I want to thank Deanne Jeffrey for all of the work she's done, and also want to thank Mayor Jones for all of the assistance he's been providing with respect to this. Unfortunately, many times when you have emergencies like the park, you know, often, a lot of, you often have a lot of confusion. I'm not saying that that's not here, but we're going to get through it. If you're a resident of the park and you need assistance, please contact the city, please contact my office, 708-891-8197. Also, to those residents if I, that have pre-existing inquiries, if I haven't gotten back with you, my fondest and humble apologies. Unfortunately, this took a little bit more precedent. I will be contacting you over the next couple of days, preferably between now and the weekend. Also, I want to just remind residents, the Seven Fort website will be going up very, very soon. I will provide a lunch date at another meeting perfectly in the near future, and just continue to report your concerns. If you have issues with vacant properties, if you see any suspicious activity, please contact the ward, please contact me at 708-891-8197, or a smith@calumetcity.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner?
Yes, thank you. Real quick, I just want to remind the residents, the ones that have contacted my office regarding speed bumps, those speed bumps are being ordered. We're just waiting on them to come in. Public Works will have those down immediately. I urge the residents to be careful out there, watch the speeders, and also, residents, please, if you need assistance, apply to the Calumet City Resources Residential Assistance Program. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Oh, my prayers are with the people in the park, the residents of the park that have been displaced. Still my prayers. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to reiterate what the other Aldermen said, my thoughts and prayers are with all of the families that was affected by this horrific incident, and if my office can be of any service or any help, whatever it may be, please do not hesitate to call, reach out, 708-891-8194, or 708-212-2240. And before I forget, the food box giveaway program has been suspended until further notice. The mayor and I are working through some more resources, not available, not able to take advantage of the Thornton Township food box donations for whatever reason. Must be some, something going on that I'm not privy to the information to share with anyone, but hopefully, they work through whatever it may be, and we can get our resources back to the way that they were in the past. Thank you, Mayor. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. On August 13th, the Thor, third ward, ward will be hosting its annual back-to-school event. We are currently in the planning stages. If you want to assist with the event during this stage, give my office a call at 708-891-8193. Also, Calumet City will be offering free legal services, starting June 22nd, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at the Calumet City Library. Residents can call or sign up on the city's website. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Navarette?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo what my colleagues have already said, but prayers out to those affected by the fire. Thank you to the fire department for their bravery that they showed in getting that fire under control, and also to echo Alderman Gardner's statement, we did approve some speed bumps, additional speed bumps in this, in this agenda, so hopefully, the lead time on that isn't too long, but Public Works will certainly be getting those down as soon as they receive them. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Under the mayor's report, excuse me, just want to invite residents to the library, a couple announcements for the library. The library has started the Jazz on the Grass, Jazz and Blues, which will start next Thursday as well, from 6:00 to 8:00. So, anyone, you can bring your lawn chairs and come out and listen to jazz music, blues, right at the library, which is at 660 Manistee. Encourage all residents to go to the library and support. The library also has an after-school program, which the city council supported. The program had 86 participants in it. They meet on Tuesdays and Saturdays, so any men and women who want to volunteer and be a mentor to young men, young men and women in Calumet City, it is a CHAMP's program. This program is connected to President Barack Obama. This program is primarily in the city, but it's first time in Calumet City. They're working with all our schools, and also with daycare centers in Calumet City to start an exciting mentoring program. So, I encourage anyone who wants to be a mentor to go to the link on our website, it's CHAMP's Mentoring Calumet City, and help encourage a young man, young woman in school or in whatever profession they want to go to, but this is an exciting program for our city. The last item, I wanted to state this publicly, and I spoke to Alderman Wilson, and I told I would apologize to her personally. I made an error in communicating an issue with extended stay. The Alderman has a passion for not only our community, but what our residents went through. Her and I did speak about the issue, and my intentions tonight was to apologize to her publicly tonight, which I'm doing now, but my goal is to make sure that we all understand when we have these tragedies, we all get passionate, and we all get emotional, me included. And one of the things I wanted to say to the Alderman was that I apologize, and look forward to some of the great communication we will have. So, that being said, that is our, I don't know, city treasurer, Tarka, did you have anything for tonight? City attorney, Casper? That's all. We have nothing further to come before the city council. Is there a motion to adjourn at 7:04 PM?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned at 7:04 PM. Thank you, everyone.